As we've moved through milestones in state achievement complex, one question that's come up is Common Core State Standards and a desire on our part to understand a little bit more about what are Common Core State Standards, what are we doing to meet those, how does it affect our students. We hear various things in the community. Sometimes we hear that this is a dumbing down of standards and it's awful and it's the end of public education. Now, the people think it's the greatest thing in the entire world because it finally lets us level a playing field and brings us up to a standard of what to expect from public education. So, tonight, we have staff with us and superintendent, if you could introduce this item.
And this was by board request to get more background and deeper information on Common Core. So, Sue Ann Higgins, our Chief Academic Officer, and Kimberly Matier, who is the Director of Instruction Curriculum and Assessment, will give us actually what I think is going to be a really informative session on Common Core.
Hello, and I would just say that I, that our Executive Director of Teaching and Learning, Melissa Goff, was planning to do the presentation, was unable to be here due to illness tonight. So, to begin with, the Common Core Standards, we believe, is another strategy to move us towards our equity goals. And so, we want to work through that with you this evening. Each of the leaders in our central office team this year was asked in the fall by Carol to come up with what makes you optimistic about PPS and what frames your work. And so, Melissa framed hers around the leaders in her department and their shared urgency around our racial educational equity work as they lead our departments. And Dr. Matier is one of those leaders. So, right now, we know that our results are inequitable insofar as some students clearly have access to an advantage from the way our instruction happens, the way our assessment happens. And so, in reckoning with that, we believe that the Common Core Standards work helps move us to shifts that will alter those results for us long-term. So, Dr. Matier?
So, Oregon has adopted the Common Core State Standards, and we are one of 47 states that have adopted the standards in both English Language Arts and Mathematics. It is a state-led effort, it's not a federal mandate, and so, one of the things that we are working on is really focusing on effective implementation and making sure that all of our students are going to be college and career-ready. And so, we're really excited about this adoption and glad that Oregon is taking part. So, what I'm going to kind of just walk you through for this next part is the work that we're doing around introducing the standards in mathematics to our teachers and staff across the system. We started with this work last year in 2011, '12 with kindergarten through second grade. And this year, we are working with our fourth and fifth grade. And then, in parts of our fourth grade, we're just doing, we're focusing on the fractions domain, and we'll continue with that work next year for the rest of the areas that we'll be implementing. So, if you look at the timeline, also, we started our eighth-grade cohort last year, even though it's not kind of in that regular progression with the green there in that first column, because we know that our eighth-graders are going to be the first cohort of students to take the Common Core State Assessment. So, that's why we started them a year early. And then, the rest of our grades will be introduced to the Common Core State Standards in 2013, '14 with full implementation by 2014, '15. There are six instructional shifts that we're really focusing on with our teachers and introducing those to our staff. Once a month, we have job alikes where they get to learn about these shifts. We're particularly interested in highlighting the application shift in that providing increased opportunities for students to engage in application of skill and concepts of what they're being able to do and what they are learning, so that they can apply those skills in a real-world kind of relevant situation through different tasks that teachers introduce to them and showing up, teachers where they show up in the curriculum.
So, with regard to budget implications, one of the things that we want to bring forward to you is how we are looking at what does it mean for us to make the shift to Common Core Standards as well as the smarter balanced assessment. And so, we know that because of the dramatic shift to habits of mind work, that our Common Core work will require of us in order to really accelerate all students towards being college and future-ready. We know that it will require extensive professional development. And so, we anticipate general fund costs to support this, and we're working on this in our budget proposal process right now around the professional development facilitation and production of support materials for our staff to connect the Common Core Standards work with our current curricula to be roughly $500,000.
And the second area that we're adopting in terms of the Common Core State Standards is in the English Language Arts and then also in literacy across content areas, so our social studies and science and other subjects, which would be focusing on reading, writing, listening, and speaking skills across content areas. So, with the introduction of the Common Core State Standards in this area, we just started that work this year, so we're a year behind our math introduction. And then, we'll continue to roll out, as you can see in the chart, with full implementation again by 2014, '15. We did, this right here is reflecting our K-5 implementation, but our 6-8 followed that same implementation as K-2. And then, we have invited our high schools to participate in the workshops that we've created for our 6-8 teachers so that they can have that information as well. Again, we have six instructional shifts that we're focusing on in this area, and I will just highlight a couple of them for you. For example, in number four, we're really focusing on getting students to have increased opportunities for responding to texts and having text-based answers, so really looking for evidence in the text and citing that. Whereas, before, we talked a lot about self-to-text, where we were getting students to kind of tap into their personal experiences and relating to characters in the text. But we want to increase the level of complexity and rigor by having them really have increased opportunities around citing evidence in response to what they're reading. The other piece is again around number six, where we're really focusing on building the literacy skills across the content areas, increasing the opportunities for students to engage in those reading behaviors with increasingly complex texts, so that, you know, we're actually teaching those skills beyond third grade, because we know the text is getting more complex. And so, we still want to provide that guided support for students.
So, in terms of English Language Arts as well as English Language Development, next year is the statewide adoption year. So, as you know, we go through a cycle every seven years of adoption for curriculum materials. And so, for next year, we will be connecting that adoption to the work we're doing with the Common Core Standards. So, one of the implications for Common Core Standards is that at the high school level focuses considerably more on nonfiction reading and writing than you would typically find right now in the bookrooms in our high schools. So, that's one of the kinds of shifts that will then show up as we analyze what materials we want to adopt. So, as always, the English Language Arts adoption is a really significant investment on the part of the district. Additionally, now, we know that we've got to also have digital, digitally-adapted resources as well, because the work that we are doing now and the resources that need to last at least seven years and maybe longer will need to be available in a variety of formats. So, all of that will be part of how we anticipate what could be as much as a $5 million investment in this adoption. So, it's a really big, big impact. And statewide, of course, districts are reckoning with how to accomplish that simultaneous with the reduction in education funds from the state. So, this will be a complex one and will be part of what you'll be seeing from us in the budget proposal process. So, also, though, we are looking at how to leverage this investment. So, we know that some of what we need to do for Common Core work is to connect it to work that we're doing with, in other technology-assisted areas. We're also working with the Council of Great City Schools, with other districts, to see how they're doing it and implementing this in a more sustainable, cost-effective way, as well as working with ODE. So, there's a lot of work ahead of us on this one. And but we wanted to try to demonstrate to you sort of what does it mean to do this. So, they're disconnected insofar as this just happens to be the year of the English Language Arts and English Language Development Adoption Year, and it's the time in which we are moving towards our Common Core State Standards implementation. So, that's where you see us sort of talking about them at the same time. Additionally, the kind of technical supports that we need now and going into the future continue to change and be complex. We're working closely with our IT department and looking at what kinds of technical supports will teachers need to do and use these tools, as well as the assessment tools that we're about to share with you. So, this, the technical maintenance pieces, we believe, will require budgeting around $400,000 for next year.
So, Sue Ann, I don't mean to interrupt, but some of the numbers that are up on these slides are slightly different than the information we got in our presentation. So, I'm just, I'm curious which, I'm assuming this was created after this, and so, these are maybe more accurate numbers?
Yes, yes, they are.
So, the ones you're presenting here are more accurate?
They are. So, I apologize for the difference in versions.
Sue Ann, can you also talk to us about, you just mentioned a $5 million investment, especially in nonfiction, and given that we're looking at a $17 million cut in our budget next year. If we are not, if we don't have the capacity to do this amount of investment or any investment at all, what does that do in terms of introducing Common Core?
It's a really great question. And for clarification, I'm not suggesting that we would spend $5 million on nonfiction texts. What I mean is that we would be, so, in this adoption, we would be looking at all of our language arts and language, English Language Development materials and doing an adoption on the state's schedule then. So, what does it mean for us to not invest this much? It's complex. What we often find, and certainly this isn't the first time tough times have come around for school districts, when adoptions get rolled forward or only partially implemented, it tends to compromise school districts long-term in terms of their ability to have the right resources available. And so, it's, I mean, so this is a really tough time to do this, and also, a really, really tough and bad time not to make this investment, because we want to be aligned for the Common Core Standards. Kimberly, do you want to address this further?
Yes. The Common Core State Standards are only measuring the knowledge and skills that we want students to have, and it doesn't take into account how to deliver the standards instructionally. And so, the piece that, especially with our equity work, is to be really thinking about how can we be responsive to students who are vulnerable to not meeting the standards or to grow in the, in the way that we need them to grow on time. And, you know, so we have to accelerate our learning, because we know our students of color in particular are underperforming at this time. So, the, the English Language Development and the strategies and the resources would only help to support, accelerate the learning and growth of our students of color. So, that would be a way that it could hurt the Common Core implementation in terms of being more effective, having the right resources and materials to help teachers be more responsive to their students of color.
So, how much money are we looking at?
Five million dollars.
Depends which part, yeah.
Yeah, on this one, and then, this one piece, what we're talking about, is five million dollars. You know, I'm just reminded, the last time that we were able to finally do a catch-up on curriculum is because, you know, two local levies ago, we included that in it, and that's what finally allowed us to replace 30-year-old texts. But, we don't have that in our current local levy, the priority was teaching position. So, I just want us to be realistic about what we can and can't do. And I assume that every other district that's attempting to accomplish this is looking at the same challenge. So, another thing for us to talk to our state legislators about.
You know, higher and higher accountability and more and more mandates without being willing to invest. We just heard from high schools principals, the direct impact, positive impact on having those additional resources, and this would be a similar thing.
Absolutely.
So, just a little bit about the assessment side of this work. Because we are, or we have adopted a new set of standards, and there is increased rigor or cognitive rigor around that, so that we can make sure that students are college and career-ready, we have had to also design a new assessment system, so that we are accurately measuring how students are responding to instruction. So, the Smarter Balanced Assessment has been designed by this consortium of states in the Western Region, and it is a summative assessment, which means that it's an assessment that happens after the learning has occurred. And what it's really measuring is the effectiveness of instruction and how students are responding to the activities that the teachers have designed for them to engage in. The part that is a little different than from our current Oaks Assessment or State Assessment is that, well, first, I'll talk about what's similar, and that is that it is a computer-adaptive test. It is measuring still the knowledge and skills that students have. But because everything can't be measured on a computer, they have added a component that apprises a performance task. And a performance task is really more of a real-world kind of relevant situation that they ask students to think about. And the students will then use a variety of what they've learned over the course of years, so not just one year of time, but they could, you know, apply what they learned even in second grade or third grade, and then apply all of the different concepts that they learned about to this one task. So, it's really getting at the thinking and how they're approaching a situation or a problem, so that they can have more of a real-world kind of relevant experience.
Do you want to address these?
So, in terms of the technology implications, there are technology standards that have also been adopted. We do want our students to be ready for 21st century, and we know that we live in a very technology-driven society. And so, it is important for us to make sure that we're building those skills in for, for students and having that experience. With the Smarter Balance, there's also a technology piece in there, in that the students will have to create visual models and things like that. So, it's a little bit more sophisticated than what we're seeing on the Oaks, on the technology side of things. So, it's really, we just want to ensure that our students are getting a well-rounded, comprehensive educational experience, and technology is an integral part of that work.
One of the other pieces of the Smarter Balance that is also a challenge is that it, it's, the cost to us from the state is about double per student what the Oaks Assessment is. So, it's more complex to administer, because it has students doing some independent tasks. And so, that will also have budgetary implications for us over time. At this time, we have, I believe, only two schools piloting it. So, we're at a stage where we're, you know, given that we're two years out from full implementation, where we are learning to use the tools and adapt them, make certain that we have the technological upgrades in our planning and budgeting processes, so that we are ready to start when this takes hold.
At CPS, we have two schools piloting it?
Yes.
Has anyone else piloted it before we've piloted it?
So, the pilot is happening at the same time across multiple districts and states. So, we've had opportunities to sample some of the items and take a look at individual items, but not in a more comprehensive way, such as some of the pilot schools are doing at this time. And they were pre-selected, so it's not, we didn't have any involvement in that piece.
Have they gotten any feedback at this point?
Not yet.
So, and again, one difference that Kimberly described is that the Smarter Balance is administered at the end of the school year. So, one of the kind of unusual things about the Oaks Test is that you're, you start testing mid-year, and then if kids don't make it, you test them again. And rather than actually assessing, so what happened over the course of the school year, from the end of last year to the end of this year. So, so it intentionally targets the last 12 weeks of school for all students to really capture. So, what have the gains over this year been? So, we hope that it should give us a better portrait of what the year's instruction shows in terms of additional skills students have.
So, if students don't pass those tests, is it tied to graduation?
So, the Smarter Balance will replace the Oaks Test. So, yes, it will replace.
So, if they take it in the last 12 weeks of school, will they have time to retake it if they've failed?
So, it's not given annually, it's given on the same, to the same grade bands that the Oaks Test currently is. So, for high schoolers, that's the junior year. Yes.
So, do you have any more with your presentation?
That's it.
Okay. So, I just want to open it up to colleagues for any additional questions.
When you said smarter balanced assessment costs two times more than Oaks.
Oh, you thought that.
So, first of all, this is what the whole state's moving toward?
Yes, what all of 47 states are moving towards.
And do we know what that means for our district in terms of the cost?
I don't have the dollar figure.
We don't have it at this time.
Are we talking hundreds of thousands? Are we talking millions? Are we talking about?
Not millions.
Okay. That's good.
But if we know what Oaks costs us, right?
Do we know what Oaks costs us?
Right. So, the variables, I don't know. So, we know that Oaks costs around $13.50 per student. We believe Smarter Balance will be in the range of $26 per student is the most recent figure I heard. And I don't know the N of how many students we test in third, fifth, eighth, and 11th grades right now. So, but it's several thousand students.
So, it's $13.50 for each time during the year, or total for the whole year's worth of maybe multiple times taking the Oaks Test?
Good question. I think it is just the one time. I don't think it's the multiple times. So...
Yeah. I mean, one thing that sort of appeals to me about the, what sounds like improvement with the Smarter Balance, mine is that we aren't doing this constant throughout the year. Pressure on teachers to be spending so much time doing that potentially, although the other question I had was just around, do you know, I mean, this isn't maybe a federal mandate, but it's a state mandate. And do you have, so you're complying with it and doing your best to comply with it, which I appreciate. But, so, this is a question not really at you, but at, you know, the powers that be that are bringing this to us. I mean, do you have a sense of how much teacher involvement there was in developing either the standards or the Smarter Balanced Assessment?
Yes, there is quite a bit of involvement. So, with the consortium, it included stakeholders from all levels, really, even policymakers. Teachers were definitely involved from the very beginning all the way through the process. And then, the Governors Association. There was also a National Council of Chief State Officers. So, really, at every single level, all of the stakeholders have been represented throughout the entire process.
For the standards as well as for the assessment?
Yes. The standards actually have been developed by educators, leading educators across the country.
Have students been represented?
I don't know how much student involvement there was in designing and developing the standards. However, during the revision, getting feedback, there were multiple, or involvement from communities. So, just as you see, CPS goes through a particular process in getting stakeholder feedback and that kind of thing. There's been feedback from a variety of different community groups. I believe parents have had some feedback and that kind of thing. So, this is based on a set of international standards. It's very research-based. It's not that it just came out of nowhere. This has been going on for a couple of decades in terms of really thinking about how we can increase the level of rigor for students, so that they can be successful once they exit the school system and have a viable way to, you know, to live and to work. So...
How's this gonna, yeah, how's this going to affect our ESL students and our language immersion students?
Actually, I think this is a prime opportunity to accelerate the growth of our students who have been underperforming traditionally, and that they will actually have increased opportunities to, to meet the cognitive rigor demands that are being asked for by our workforce and for our colleges.
How so?
Because these standards are directly aligned to help students meet those entry-level skills that are needed. And it's also gives a more of a guidance. It has focused the work of teachers, so that it's not so broad. So, we often have teachers who are trying to cover a lot of topics. And so, the amount of topics that are being covered has been reduced, because there's a more focused and coherent way that the standards have been developed, so that it can really allow the teachers to go at a deeper level with students and they have deeper learning.
Am I correct in that they looked at the skills necessary for college and career readiness, and then they basically back mapped what would be an age-appropriate skill?
Absolutely.
Not necessarily even content, but what skills are needed to access whatever content students come across. Is that correct?
Absolutely. But with the content, then they focused it and reduced the number of topics that students needed to know.
Colleague, any other questions?
Just a comment, I mean, based on the, on the presentation, one of the good things that I think you highlighted was the whole emphasis on literacy instruction in all content area. For a number of years, at least this district and, you know, surveys have, they've been put forth. I mean, there were some, a number of challenges for teachers. One of them was, of course, classroom management. The other one was literacy instruction in the content area.
Right.
And their lack of preparation in that area, or at least some gaps that they identified themselves.
Right.
It seems to me that there is potential to address that, I guess, ongoing challenge, you know, in the district, and to then impact the overall achievement of students, if we actually do that investment in this way.
Absolutely. You're right on target.
Let me ask you another question. I think in your, in the longer materials that we had, you had a slide around the limitations of the Common Core in terms of equity. So, could you talk about that a little bit? And I mean, my note on the side was, I mean, so what you stated is that, and I think it's about in the longer packet, it's one, two, two, four, six, seventh slide in, that the Common Core State Standards do not explicitly foster development of students with cultural and linguistic backgrounds, deep exposure and understanding multicultural perspectives, articulate culturally responsive strategies. So, my question was, so therefore, PBS will what?
So, actually, it really aligns itself well with the work that we're doing with our equity work across the district. And so, it's just integrating those two pieces together. And so, we, you know, we talk about our instructional strategies with our teachers, and, and really, it's about what do you know about your students? What are the, what are the assets that they're bringing to the classroom? So, taking what you know in terms of their strengths and the areas that you want to grow them, so their strengths culturally, academically, socially, so looking at the whole child, and then taking that and infusing that into how are you going to design a lesson that, that the students can be highly engaged and motivated by. And I think with this focus on being, you know, real-world and relevant, looking at multiple perspectives, is a way to kind of get at that. So, it's marrying the two pieces.
And I think it also bears saying, it's not a curriculum. So, it's a frame-
And I think with this focus on being, you know, real-world and relevant, looking at multiple perspectives is a way to kind of get at that. So it's marrying the two pieces.
And I think it also bears saying, it's not a curriculum. So it's a framework. It's not standardization. It's a set of standards. And so it's, it remains incumbent upon us and our instructors throughout the district to make certain that, that really mining the rich cultural heritage of all our students is a connection in the curriculum in every class and every content area. So, so we call that out, and then we felt like we needed to shorten the presentation, so sorry that you have two different versions, but.
I know you're always being pressured in that direction.
So we call it out, though, to say that there's, that, so this is not magic either. What it does is allow us to, I believe, have a more adaptive or focused for large-scale change characteristic, as opposed to another set of standard, standardization from the state that says, you know, read this, do this, jump this way, et cetera. So this is, asks for more complex to be, tasks to be accomplished by teachers and by their students, and for us to really be preparing kids for the 21st century in a way that standards have not really gotten us to yet, so.
The, the Common Core themselves are not inherently designed or talking around the same equity goals, so.
That's correct.
What you're saying is that it can help foster that, but it's going to be incumbent on us to make sure that we keep that, that we add to that and make sure that it's integrated with it. So that, that part isn't being mandated or standardized or supported in any way by the state, so I'm just calling that, and I appreciate you guys calling that out because we have to make sure that we're doing both of those, so.
I do also just want to point out, though, that even though it's not called out specifically in the standards, in the documents in which the Common Core is introduced, it talks about rigor relevance and relationships, and really promotes the idea of, of districts infusing what they know about their kids in terms of their assets, and being really responsive culturally as you're thinking about lesson design and instructional delivery, so.
Linguistically, I saw that.
Yes. And linguist, linguistically, yes.
Great, thanks.
You have another question?
Yeah. So I feel like if you're going to have this common curriculum, and even if teachers can kind of switch it up a little bit, you still end it all on a standardized test, which still kind of implies that there is a specific sort of information that you're supposed to obtain from taking that course. And as we all know, those highly correlate to income and are racially biased, and I feel like as a whole, this is a pretty inequitable solution, and it's still a standardized system. And I don't know why we're not working on just community control of our schools.
So I, I just want to respond by saying the test, the summative test and any kind of test or assessment is really just to, for us to have, it's a check and balance. What is it that our students need? And helping us to identify that so we can meet their needs. It's not, it's not meant for any other reason than to make sure we are, it's, we are tasked to make sure that our kids receive what they need so that they can be college and career-ready. If they're not college and career-ready, then they won't be able to have gainful employment and to be able to live, you know, independent, and, you know, to be able to, to participate and be fully able to take care of themselves. We know that the unemployment rate is extremely high. We have a shortage on jobs, and we are now in a globally competitive environment. And so we need to make sure that our students have the skills and the knowledge to be able to get job, to be able to take care of themselves. So it's, it's our, it's our responsibility, that's what we're tasked with. Just like a doctor is, is required to, you know, check and see what are the symptoms, what are the needs of their patient, and then how can they help their patient get better?
So I'm going to ask to my right if there are any other questions, but I just, as a quick response, I don't, I heard it was, it's not a curriculum, it's a set of tasks and skills that people should have. How a teacher in a classroom access that is totally within their right and their freedom to figure out how to do that. But I, I don't think, I would be surprised if, generally in public, we think, our community would think that by the time you get to the end of high school, you shouldn't be able to do certain tasks or have certain skills. So I guess I don't view this as removing local control. In fact, what I heard you say is that there's still a lot of control. In fact, there's a focusing. We're not expecting you to do a wide array, but there are some core skills that you need to have by the time you leave our system to be college and career-ready. And how a teacher gets to that, we're going to make sure that the skills are there, but the content.
Right.
Whether it's you memorize the Pledge of Allegiance or whatever, that, that's going, I feel like going away, and it's saying, now, how do you make sense of the Pledge of Allegiance as a document, and how do you, how do you put it in context? And how do you, as an eighth grader or a 10th grader, even access the language in it? So I guess I just, I'd be caution, I'd caution us, again, to use what I would say kind of soundbites out there in the community. And that's what I think the value is in, in learning a little bit more. And it's not that this is the be-all and-all, like this is the right way to assess every student. But again, I think it's just an understanding of what it is.
So I, so I would also say that it's, it's, I think what you were trying to point out is it's our test of ourselves. Are we meeting the needs of our students?
Absolutely.
And that's just as important as are our students passing the test? It's are we, if they're not, why aren't they, and what do we need to do differently? And that's, that's where I see the important piece of this.
So I believe that these assessments do what, what our best teachers do, which is really look at how are kids progressing through a set of skills that really make them able to have habits of mind that allow them to navigate in a, in a complex society. So, so I think that there's opportunity here, and we are engaging our teachers in developing, so how do we align with these standards then, on what we believe in about what we've done and what we believe we've not done well? How do we realign that so that these standards pull us forward? So look forward to it.
So thank you very much for the presentation. I know it's interesting to look at, look at this and get our heads around it a little bit. I think the, you know, I work at an organization that serves one of our most underserved populations, and in fact, we're pretty assessment-heavy. Many of the, the students that we work with are case-managed with youth advocates, folks that, that work with them all along sort of the academic curriculum and spectrum. But what, the key to it is how you use that information. And I remember when Ben Cannon and Whitney Grubbs came to, maybe a year ago or two years ago, and talked to us about much of this, I had similar comments. The key really is, how do you do it? And I'll, I'll say that the assessment that my organization uses is actually the map assessment, which is being boycotted at Garfield High School right now. But it's used in Seattle, but it's used really as a per-student map, literally, that designs what the interventions need to be, how you address those specific things with that student. It's very student-centric, very student-specific. The, I think the challenge is, is that that's the best used for, use for it. Whether or not, you know, another evaluation process is, is best for other uses, I don't know, but, but I found, when used in that manner, it actually gives you a lot of really concrete information about that particular student, and, and actually a path to, to bring that student up to benchmark and beyond benchmark. So my experience with one of our most underserved populations is that, in fact, these can be really helpful tools, but we use it in the way in which it was intended.
You're absolutely right, and I'm going to, I, I'm sorry, just want to make this last comment because I think it's really important that assessments are just to give us feedback on how we can better meet the needs of our students. And it's also, the more that you can work in partnership with students and families so that you're looking at the information together, it is a very powerful thing, a way to really, you know, to be transformative for students. Unlike when coaches are working with their basketball team or soccer team, they're constantly giving feedback. They're, when they have a scrimmage and they given, you know, they're looking, and that's kind of an assessment, they're looking to see how are their, how are the students or the folks on the team, how are they playing? How are they using their skills in a, in a setting where the variables are changing? And how are they learning about their teammates in terms of their strengths and weaknesses? What are they, what, how are they evaluating and analyzing the situation? And so the coach then, after observing, gives students, their students or teammates feedback, and then they go and practice those skills. So the intervention is, then the coach would then work on some discrete skills, maybe like dribbling or passing the ball or something like that. So assessment and feedback is a, is a part of our everyday life. It doesn't just happen in the school. It happens in the real world all the time in work settings. And so it's just something that, you know, we want students to feel empowered by, and it's not something that they should feel is, is something bad or negative.
And by the way, those students that are going through that assessment are graduating at about 20 points higher than our district average.
We have, we have about five more minutes. Director, I think you had a question or?
Well, I had two things. One is, we got this one sheet that's talked about the summary of core components of the Smarter Balanced Program, and I guess what I appreciated is that it talked about the summative assessment at the end of the year, but it also had a whole section on interim assessments along the way, which I think gets to what you were talking about, so.
Yeah, that's right.
That's good. I guess one of the things I wanted to follow up on, I think it was Director Atkins who asked about whether we had had much teacher input, or was it you had much teacher input? And, and I think the response we got was more about teacher input on the national level and, and the rest. And I guess, as we're looking at rolling this out, I guess I was looking for what the engagement's been at the district level.
Oh, I see, yes.
In particular, and with PAT and?
Yes, and we have representation, again, we have a CCS advisory council or committee, and that has principal stakeholders, teacher stakeholders, and then I've also been working with parents since I've been in, involved, and so we, there's a parent component as well. We're going to be also establishing parent academies so that parents are actively engaged in this conversation as we continue to move forward with our implementation. We've had a lot of good feedback. Anytime you're rolling out something new, you've always, you know, got to tweak and refine, and so we've had a lot of good feedback in terms of the implementation and things that we can do to better support at every level of the system.
And what are the two schools that you're following this project?
Roosevelt's one of them. Because he, he talked about it last week.
I am so sorry, I don't, I, I had it.
I can't recall what the second one is either, I apologize, yeah.
Okay. Thank you both.